Um, we consent calendar, but I do have a question. We have items, we're gonna pull number thirteen, the request for that. We have items ten through fourteen on the calendar, however, there's a uh paragraph after number fourteen. Is that included in consent and we only have that information in case someone wants to pull it? Or do is anybody know? In case somebody wants to speak on it? You know what I'm talking about?
Hmm.
Number fourteen. Now, I withdraw that. So, what we're gonna do is all matters within our consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the time that council votes on the motion unless members of the city council staff or public request specific items to be discussed. Or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. As I said, we've been a poll number thirteen. Can I have a motion on items ten through fourteen, please?
To the mayor?
Yes.
Make the motions for a consent counter, items ten, eleven, twelve, and fourteen.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
And Mr. Mayor, I'm so sorry, uh, before there's approval could be open this up to the public?
Mm-hmm. For?
The consent calendar, items ten, eleven, twelve, and fourteen.
Anybody from the public wanna co-comment on ten through fourteen minus thirteen? No, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, so we have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And oppose? None. Alright, number thirteen. Is Natalie, she's on the spot.
Excuse me, good evening, Mayor, City Council members. The purpose of this staff report is to amend the executive services agreement for Mr. Daley- Daring Gale. To be appointed as the interim development services director. Mr. Gale has been an employee with the city for approximately ten years. Mr. Gale's deputy city manager position was eliminated- eliminated. As part of the fiscal year nineteen twenty budget. Mr. Gale has been serving in the interim development services director position since December two thousand and eighteen, and he is overseeing many projects. I should note that the executive services employees are at will positions and have individual employee contracts. At this time, staff recommends that Mr. Gale continue as interim development services director. Thank you.
Thank you, I have a speaker request here from Pat Miller. If anybody else in the public would care to speak on that, please queue up behind Pat.
Good evening, council members. Um, I just have a couple of questions, cause the staff report wasn't really uh clear on. And the staff report kinda indicated that the city's gonna be paying Mr. Gale for um three months for um. It for a three month salary and his accrued vacation and administrative leave. Uh, because they eliminated the position he was in. And is that true that he is going to be paid that amount of money and then? Go into another city position as an interim um director of development services? And um, the staff report didn't include a salary, so is he keeping the same salary? Uh, if so, what is it and um is it an increase or a decrease from what he's making now?
Alright, Pat, as you know, this is public comment time, not question time. However, if our city attorney would care to indulge, I don't have a problem with that.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The salary and severance portion as proposed would be included as part of that. The deputy city manager pay is higher. Mr. Gale has earned his, nope, am I incorrect? Let's let Natalie answer that question then, I'm sorry.
Forgive me.
So, Mr. Gale is um as an interim development services director, he is being paid at that level. I think it's approximately sixty seven dollars. I don't know which step. Is that step, well, there is no steps in this executive services. It's just a range, so it's approximately sixty seven dollars. Um, and the, what was the other question? The deputy city manager is paid at a lower, the range is lower than the interim or the development services director. Um, was there another one?
Severance pay and.
Explain the severance process.
Pay, so the severance pay is being paid at the interim develop- uh interim development services director position. He um because it's at the rate he is currently at and it is um as and that is part of the amendment that we are, that's part of what staff is recommending to council. Um, and then he would con- he would continue in the interim role. The severance is related to the elimination of his deputy city manager position. It is an interim role, um, and um, at this time, we would, red staff recommends to continue at this time until there is a recruitment.
Does that help you out, Pat?
Is there a recruitment for that position or is that Diana's?
That is going to be, that's gonna be, um, we're gonna wait for that until we hire a new city manager.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing nobody else walk up? Looking for action?
Through the mayor.
Yes. Oh.
Comments.
Go ahead.
Comment through the mayor. Um, thank you for the presentation, Natalie, and the explanation of things. Uh, Mr. Mayor, when we looked at the um budget and we looked at everything. Uh, we looked at it through the lens of how can we maximize every dollar that we have? Uh, my comments tonight will be limited on the budgetary process and what's best for the city. And not at a, not at a person or our particular personnel here at the city at all. Um, through the elimination process of the deputy city manager economic development. Uh, and looking to rejoin the EDC, we were able to save the city about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and receive roughly the same services that we've currently rece- uh are getting. Um, likewise, uh, I have received multiple feedback uh from people that deal with the city. On continual business uh through our uh planning department and and everything, building department. And it's, it's no joke, uh, we have a department that has been in, for lack of better words, in triage for quite a while. And uh, we need to extend and bring some love to that department and start getting that to being a department that can take care of the needs of the city. Uh, people have asked questions of how come they can go to other municipalities and things go through rather quickly. Um, to, you know, just, just the service we're getting here. Uh, had someone just recently that had been trying to reach out. And we are uh understaffed and and the work's just not getting done at the customer level that we all want to bring. I know that I have had uh uh side conversations with our in- uh interim city manager about what would be the possibility of outsourcing? This, a lot of other cities do that. What do we get? Uh, when we outsource, we get uh professionals that come in, professionals that probably have at least ten to twenty years' worth of experience. Uh, they have teams at their uh at their side that can step in, so we can start expediting business. To do the business of the city. One point is we've asked ever since uh uh I came on the council early on. We started asking for the fee rate study and we've asked for it multiple times. And I asked for it thirty days ago to be at this meeting and it's not here yet because we don't have the resources, we don't have the manpower. Just as with the elimination of the deputy city manager position and the economic developer uh position. There are savings, uh, PERS related, benefits related, everything. To immediately start outsourcing this department to get a team of professionals in here to meet the needs of our citizens in the city. And it will help us budgetarily as well. Uh, I understand the need for the contract addendum because uh this person has been uh filling this role for about six months. Um, but like with many other positions we have here in the city, um, it's, it's a limited position. And uh, Ms. Langley, may I ask you a question, please? Um, again, we, we've had other conversations about is it possible to outsource this and? Other cities do outsource their, their departments, correct?
Correct.
And how long would it approximately take you to, I mean, would it take a couple of weeks, would it take four weeks to possibly get someone in here? To take care of our department that needs help?
Um, you know, it depends. We have a couple of contract planners that we utilize right now. I'd have to check with them on their availability and the resources that they have available to come in and supplement the department. I will note, we do have um other staff members within the existing development services department, so it wouldn't be. Um, outsourcing the entire department, it would be supplementing the services we already have.
Yes.
And so, I, I, you know, I can't say how quickly I could bring resources on board. It would be a direct impact to services available for a period of time. And that um our services would um would take a hit during that time. Um, but I, we do have some resources available and if they're not available, then there are other companies that we can reach out to. To bring in for supplemental services.
Okay, thank you. Um, looking at it from a budgetary standpoint, uh, we have to cash out the severance, we have to cash out the vacation that's accrued. Uh, there is tax or there is savings and outsourcing. And as we know, everything ends with our fiscal year of June thirty. So, uh, as all of our other limited term employees, uh, I, I. Understand the, the resol- or the, the resolution for the amendment. But it needs to be limited term certain, and I would propose uh June thirty to end and coincide with our current fiscal year. And yes, there will be impact uh immediately, but it should be short-lived if we contract out with the right firm. Within a matter of weeks, we should be up and running with more resources than we have. And you are correct, I was not talking about the rest of our staff. They're, they're doing fine, it's just w- we need more resources in here, so we need that experience that is a decade plus. That we're gonna have from a contractor, there's gonna be savings and I would propose um. As we look at this, to actually have it be a limited term and the interim um position conclude on June thirty, twenty nineteen.
So let me just note, if the council decides to end at June thirtieth, twenty nineteen, you actually don't need this amendment.
With the Mr. Mayor, the amendment's not needed, so as far as I'm, my opinion.
That's approved, it's not.
Yeah, with what I proposed it contradicts.
From the council.
Through the mayor. I am concerned about what's going on in our development services um department. Um, I know that uh there are issues uh that aren't necessarily. Stuck on one person in regards to the old Feather River Mills property and it's languishing out there. And uh, I know that that particular developer is probably, I would assume, getting very. Close to the wit's end, it's been a long time and we can't seem to get off top dead center. I know there are some things going on, but. Um, it's my understanding today that there, that there are still issues. I also understand through our conversation that we've, we're losing someone out of the planning department.
Potentially.
Yes, potentially. So, I, I, I agree with Councilman Shaw, I think, you know, the, the need for us to get some additional help inside our community. Develop or development services prob- department. Uh, to me, is something I've voiced in this council chambers before. Um, and I, I. I, I support the fact that we need to get somebody and get some, some help in here. And I think we need to do it as quickly as possible. There are fee studies, um, we have this accessory dwelling unit issue that had, that has popped up. Doesn't seem like we were supposed to be collecting fees, then I guess we did, but then we didn't. I'm not sure what's going on, it's confusing. Uh, and as a, as a decision maker, um, I don't really wanna be confused when I'm sitting up here.
So, so I would just like to note um that the current interim development services director, as previously noted, started around December. The previous development services director left to go to be city manager of another agency. And so, a lot of these issues were, were issues prior to. And um, so it's difficult for anybody in that position, cause you have a lot of projects that have been hanging out there for a little while.
I absolutely acknowledge that and this is in no way focused on any one person, I'm speaking about the department. The department concerns me because as we talked earlier, a key to water rates could be development. Do we have the staff, do we have the ability to, to push these projects through in a timely fashion? And I don't think that we do. Uh, I think we need, we need to bolster that department. I think we need to do it as soon as we can.
Okay. Ma'am?
Through the mayor, thank you. Um, I, I agree, I agree with um the two fellow council members that just spoke about the. The em- I guess, emergency needs in the developmental services department. Um. I, I. Um, there's things that um, it's a city council that we have. Confidential conversations that we have to abide for by and um, and so, one of the things. That as I'm considering from the perspective of what I've learned so far in the last several months. Is um how critical and important the city manager. And Diana, you've been doing a fantastic job working through so many um things that we've had to work through, which. Um, we've made, made some strong headways and we're very close to, I think, the place where our new city manager's gonna. Crossing my fingers, folks, that we get a, a person on board. And. Um, I'm hoping that this person that we end up selecting or hiring. Um, has the opportunity to bring in some ideas and thoughts in here too. I'm not sure that at this moment, I, I'm fully interested in outsourcing, as you mentioned. Um, because I, it seems to me we're so close to, hopefully, if everything goes well. Close to the decision of bringing in a city manager and hopefully that individual may have. Some thoughts. Um, may have some connections, some other ideas that could probably resolve this, hopefully, within a, a month or two. And I, I know that development is critical. Um, it is not, it has not occurred, we've suffered through the fact. That our city has not developed over the years. Um, but. Here, what I know firmly is that I can't change the past right now. But I can definitely make the impact towards what's needed now in the future. I'm sorry, Sean, was that something that your eyes hurt or I was just wondering? Um.
Not at all.
Okay, so what I'm saying is that I. I think that we can keep who we have at this moment. Let's move forward with the city manager, make that decision thereafter. That's um where I'm leaning towards at this moment, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, point of clarification, um, when I was talking about outsourcing, I, I'm duly looking at. The new city manager coming in. That city manager needs to be able to do the evaluation and decide whether or not it's best to outsource. Or to do a full recruitment on their terms and it be a level playing field. And anyone in our current uh department would be eligible to apply. But depending on what the uh new city manager's preference is on that, but it wouldn't be a. You know, we're gonna do this for four years, this is to get us through to that next, to think about the future, because right now. We, we have a huge need that we can't meet and we need to, to fix it. And so, I wanted to clarify, it wasn't looking years, it may only be six months. But there's budgetary savings and there's more um potential with the knowledge and expertise of an outside firm.
Through the mayor.
Yep. Um, Diana, do we know there's gonna be budgetary savings using outside firm?
I don't know that, cause I don't know what the proposal price will be or how much uh time they'll need to spend within the department.
Okay, and using a, a outside firm, they, they know, they're not gonna know the citizens of our community. The developers and the contractors that come in here every day, which our staff knows. As folks come in and they, they, they have a working relationship with, with the folks that we have working with us. Um, I'm gonna agree with Councilwoman Espando- Espandola and uh. Just keep it the way it is and let the city manager make the decision, he or she. Uh, you know, what's, what's another six months or however long it's gonna take? Uh, we have, if everything works right, we should have a city manager within the next two to three months. So, uh, I'd like to, I'm gonna agree with uh Grace and uh have it stay like it is, myself personally.
Through the mayor and, and respecting your opinion, but. I've spoken confidentially with two developers who are local, they're frustrated. And these are our constituents now that are frustrated with the inability to get product out of our, our development services department. Again, I'm not focusing on any one person, I'm talking about what's going on in the department right now. And, and to wait another six months and tell these p- prospective developers that, you know, we're gonna go status quo for a while. I don't feel like I'm doing my job if I tell them that respectfully.
Alright, all that.
Through the mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I just want to say that um, I, I, Councilman Boomgarn, I, I. I know that you're, we're, I think we're equally frustrated in that process, that where things are at at this moment, I just don't. I, I don't know if we can turn it around in immediately within two, three weeks, that's. And, you know, to make this change, um, I don't know, I don't know the full answer, but that's why. I, I, I don't feel like um by con- maintaining it, yes, it sounds like staying status quo. Um. But I'm also knowing more information that our constituents may know at times. That we're close to that place with our city mana- new, hopefully, new city manager that um. And hopefully, we can resolve some of these major issues that haven't been cared for as well as they needed to be. Thank you.
Alright, regarding this item. And this is further comment? Uh, let's see here. With no further comment, we've already had public comment, we have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, if I may interrupt before there's a motion.
Yes.
And just to remind the council, you have three options tonight, approve the amendment, approve the amendment with modifications, or don't approve the amendment. If you don't approve the amendment, it will not address certain contractual language that is in the current document with regards to how Cal PERS is handled. Not that I'm urging a particular policy matter either direction, but I did wanna flag that item for you. Thank you.
So essentially, we can, we have what, the amendment includes the personnel action and the initiation of another agreement.
Yes, so the amendment would essentially, pardon me, the amendment would clear up that language. So if you were to prove it as was or as modified, it would help resolve that particular issue from a legal perspective.
This is gonna get complicated then. I do have another question through the mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Perhaps it's for Ms. Langley or Ms. or through Natalie. Um, in regards to the payment for the severance on that issue. The contract is for deputy city manager, but we're paying severance at the interim development services manager? Is that what I heard? Why would we do that? The contract, if the contract's with the deputy city manager.
So the position he's been holding for the last several months is the interim development services director, and so it talks about the current rate of pay.
Thank you. Just wanted to clear that up.
Through the mayor unless you have.
No, go ahead, I'm reading.
Okay, um, Mr. Mayor, I would move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to amend the executive service employee. Employee employment agreement with the change that it ceases uh contractually on June thirty, twenty nineteen.
Friendly amendment?
Yes.
Question, may I or not? Ms. Langley, if we, if we opted tonight to, to secure the services of some help in our development services department. How long would it take for you to get that person on board oriented and functional? To certain projects that are, are high in the queue?
So that's a very tough question to respond to. In terms of bringing somebody on board. Um, I would reach out to the two current contract planners that we have to see their availability as to whether or not they can. Increase their available, availability to Yuba City. If they're not, I would need to reach out to another firm to see availability. In terms of bringing them up to speed, that's a completely different question and I'm not sure that I can respond to that tonight because there are. Um, the development services department is working on some very complex projects. Such as the Boge Stewart Master Plan, which we have the workshop, uh, joint workshop next Monday night. Um, that project's, you know, a few years in the making, also the Feather River Mills site, which is, you know, many years. So in terms of bringing somebody up to speed, um, one of those consultants is the former uh. Community development director for the city. Um, but he, he has limitations in terms of the number of hours that he can work, so. I can't necessarily give you a response tonight, but I would try to make sure that we bring the resources on as quickly as possible. And um, do what we can to bring them up to speed, you know, in addition to. The remaining staff within the department, we have our, our planning manager here tonight, Vikram. He's less than sixty days with the city, so he doesn't have that historical or institutional kno- knowledge either. And so, regardless, we would be relying a lot on um Mr. Cook to the extent that he would want to do it. And then um, you know, we have Brian Millar and then if necessary, I could reach out to other resources as well.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I, I think that there could be uh a period of time, I think that addresses uh Councilwoman Espandola's. Um, I, I like the time certain, I like the opportunity for the city manager to come in, I think your point is well taken on a, on a clean slate. As far as, as a competitive uh hiring process or whatever he or she, city manager. Um, in the direction or who they may even have, um, that, that they feel comfortable or confident when. But I don't wanna put words in your mouth, Councilman.
Well. At this point, pick a date, July fifteenth, June thirty, July thirty first, Ms. Langley, what would you feel more comfortable with? July fifteenth?
Well, you're putting me, you're putting me in a very tough position.
Uh, no.
Well, I mean.
No. I would.
Of course, the more time you give me, the better off I'm going to be able to bring in resources, so I'll just leave it at that. Whatever, whatever timeframe you give me, I will strive to make it work.
Okay.
Um, I would propose uh August thirty first, two months. If you would indulge me, sir. Or not.
Okay, August thirty first. I'll second.
Alright, are you, will, will be clear on what we're proposing here? Yes, so everything is, as we've discussed, assumes the interim continues with the interim role until August thirty first, rather than June thirtieth.
Um, thank you for, for adding the timeframe, I'm really um thankful for that. Um. Learning how our government system works so fast, snail time. Do, do you mind extending perhaps, just asking, September thirtieth, September fifteen? Then.
No, is it no or no, you don't mind?
As no, I will not.
Okay.
It, and do you mind if I ask why you think fifteen days or thirty days more would be too much? I'm, I'm just wondering.
It, it goes back to exactly what I said as far as transitioning. Getting the department to where it's more productive with the professionals there and giving the new city manager a clean slate. Because if we continue through those, we could have a new, with the, the candidates, we could have a new city manager in September. And it needs to be a clean slate for the new city manager to decide what they wanna do.
Uh, then I, I misunderstood, I thought that perhaps um. Councilman Boomgarn helped me unclarif- clarify this, I thought perhaps that you mentioned that the city manager could then make that decision. Hopefully, in part to that, it was, did I misunderstand you?
Well, I think the, no, I, well, help me, let me hope um clear it up for you.
Yeah.
My intent is, is to have some transition time right now. Uh, this doesn't preclude our interim city manager from being, beginning the process. Of researching contract employees now, but it puts a time certain on an interim position.
Right.
Um, and that's, that's what I'm trying to get to.
Okay.
Um, that's all.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Uh, through the mayor?
Yes.
So there is a motion on the floor with regards to uh August thirtieth or the last day of August. So as, there is an updated resolution that has been circulated to you and that is on the record and is also available to the public that mentioned. and is also available to the public that mentions the severance items as well. My recommendation is if you're inclined to approve it with an end date, is you also authorize the city manager to include that language in the proposed agreement with you this evening, so it's in the agreement itself.
Who made the, who made the motion?
Yeah, I concur with that.
Okay, and whoever made the second, do they concur with that as well?
Yes.
Okay, so we have that down? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, two to three, thank you very much.
Mayor, can I have a roll call just to make sure we're clear for the record?
Sure.
Okay, so, um, Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Okay, Councilmember Boomgarden?
Aye.
Councilmember Espandola?
No.
Councilmember Cardoza?
No.
And Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you.